And do that. Okay, good evening, special school committee meeting. I know that Beth had to had some IT issues, so she's gonna hop back on, but. While she does that, I'll go ahead and start the spiel. As the chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated. On the agenda, our president can hear me, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth, oh, that's Elizabeth Ballbino will be joining us soon. Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Mandrati? Brian Haas?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yes.
Okay, introduction, this is a remote meeting. Based on the governors, I'm just do a very paraphrased version. We're convening via Zoom. All information that's available is posted on the link to the agenda. And please follow along, there will be no public comments for this meeting. Brown rules, we will. There's no speakers, we'll hold off in speaking until our name is called. Members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair. And finally, each vote will be taken via roll call vote. Okay. Call to order via roll call vote, Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albora, welcome back.
Yes, could you hear me?
Yes, yes. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes, alrighty. You were just in time to join when we were getting into the exciting spiel. Alright. Policy, hold on. Now I gotta go back to the policy folder.
Is it helpful for me to share as we go through?
It might be at some point, I think, because there's just a, the way it's in the folder is, you know, listen, it might be easier just to, that's okay with you. I'm gonna probably just pivot to Mauro and the policy subcommittee most of this anyway. So, Mauro, do you wanna, I don't know, you wanna just start taking the lead and lead us through?
Yeah.
Okay.
So these, all of this set, the BG. BGB. BGD. BGE, BGF. All kind of encompass. Parts of one forty, so the whole.
So it's like a whole, we have to do them all at once?
Section. So, this, this one is not really that different from, from the original mask. Mary, let's see.
Yeah, I had tried to just compare a few places, and Hudson was the only one that I could really come up with theirs, just to see what they did. And so they had just added, added language if we wanna put it in there or not. It prefaced, it was before the policies of principles paragraph.
The only thing. Well, actually, I'll go around, I'll see if anyone else, Mary, that's, did you have anything else you wanted? Okay. Elizabeth, anything for you that you wanted to call out in this particular policy, or? Oh, did I, is, I don't know if Elizabeth's, we lose her again? Oh, Elizabeth, I don't.
No, I'm fine.
Oh, wait, you're fine, okay, oh, I heard you just now, I heard something.
Okay, I said it four times, but, okay, so now it's working, okay?
Okay, so say things four times today, and we'll hear the fourth version. Hillary, anything for you on this one?
So, my only thing is, um, I, I, I don't have an issue so much with what Hudson said. My only recommendation for sticking with what mask has. Is, I think it could make it easier to update, to take on their new ones as they update them. So like when mask comes out with a new BG. That tweaks something, we wouldn't have to make sure and catch. Like the differences between ours and theirs, it would sort of just be like taking our, our current one and replacing it with their new one. But I'm okay either way.
Yeah, they, they did, they just updated theirs February of twenty twenty-three, and this, this was, it was exactly like us, like I say, with the exception of adding that language. So, whatever everybody wants, I'm, you know, just.
Mary, can I ask a question? And I didn't read it, but I'm just curious, this is, they prefaced it with. The school committee accepts the definition of policy set forth, so do you feel like it lacks context of what defines a policy? Cause I can see that, if, if that's what we're trying to solve here, like, what is a policy like that?
Yeah, I guess my, my thinking was that it just, it, it gives it a different caliber, because it's the national. School board, that was, that was what I was saying, versus the local. So, but like I say, I'm, it's not like we have to have it, I just threw it out there that that's what Hudson added, and I thought it was worth conversation. So.
I, I would be in agreement to, to add that, or at least cite it, like if the, cite the organization, you know, even if. Is defined, but I think it's helpful to understand, because everyone's interpretation of policy might be a little different as well. The only thing that I had a question on was. Do we want to indicate, or is it worthwhile that the policy development will? But the policy subcommittee will generally be led or driven by the policy subcommittee? Right, because I know that every. Cause the development of the policies are really. I mean, there's recommendations that are put, like, I know the policy subcommittee, the beginning of the year, generally puts forward, like, these are the policies, you know, we would like to. Try to tackle this year, and. I don't know if it would be helpful.
No, I think it's fine, we have a policy, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, we have a policy subcommittee in that.
Yeah. Even, even if it's redundant from, like you say, Hillary, because it is mentioned in another one, but sometimes the redundancy is okay, too.
Does the Hudson, what is the National School Board Association definition of policy? And is that helpful to. Clarify the difference between protocol and policy, or procedure and policy?
Well, so, the definition is, it, it basically just says where, you know, so this paragraph. It just says where it came from, basically.
Oh, okay.
From, you know, so, the way Hudson has it is, the school committee accepts the definition of policy. Set forth by National School Board Association. Colon, and then below it is, so it just, it has a reference, is basically what that is.
So basically cites it.
That makes sense, I like that, okay.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that makes more sense now.
Yeah, sorry, wasn't too clear.
I missed the colon.
Yeah, no, and it's not, so yeah.
Oh, all right, you missed the colon.
Mauro, did you have any other, you have enough feedback for you and Hillary for this, or?
So, am I, am I, are we just adding that, that one line, and then, or are we also doing?
About the policy subcommittee?
Yeah.
I don't recall off the top of my head where it cited, somewhere else, so if it is somewhere, I'm okay with not, I don't, you know, but I think redundant is okay. Because I think that's what we do, and we do talk about having things reflect, you know, I mean, we, we do. So I don't know if there's harm in having it. But this is a first read, so maybe, you know, just take it back and. You know, and we can, we can see how it's worded elsewhere. Didn't jump out at me.
Okay.
Anything else on this one? Are we good to move on to BGB policy adoption?
Yeah, ready.
Ready. Oh, is Colleen? Hey, Colleen, we there? Okay. Okay. Mauro?
We made just slight. Changes to the mask that are in blue. Mary, were you suggesting that it said, say, discussion item, first reading?
Yes, yeah, even the previous one that we had said that, and we always refer to it as first reading and then second.
Right, okay.
So.
Yep, that's fine.
I, I like that, Mary. Hillary, any feedback or thoughts? Okay, Beth, anything from you?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, I am fine with the suggestions as well, so are we thinking that we would have to do all of these together at the same time? Cause they're all incorporated with that one particular Maynard policy, so we wouldn't be able to adopt one, okay?
Right.
All right. So the next meeting, we'll, we'll be able to vote on these. The, the ones that we're doing first readings for.
Well, our next policy subcommittee meeting is. April. Hold on, we just figured it out.
Okay, well, we can, we can put it to the next one then, because I know April sixth is gonna be a pretty heavy school committee meeting anyway, so.
So it'll have to be like.
And you're not even, you're not here on April sixth anyway, so.
Yeah, right, so probably April twenty-seventh, we're meeting the eleventh.
Okay, that works.
Okay.
All right, then the next one is BCG, policy revision and review.
I'm BGC, just for.
Oh, sorry, that's what I meant.
Oh, this is where I definitely remembered us talking about the school committees policy subcommittee, because we had added it. Included in the mask one, and we added it, so that I had remembered that.
Oh, okay, okay, maybe that's where.
But it's still, it's still not bad to have redundancy.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think this is where I was thinking of when I said that, I know it's somewhere.
Yeah, I, I do like that it's here, I would think that maybe adding it the other place similar would be helpful as well. Cause it's also, policy development is applicable.
Yep. I think here we added it because when we talk about considering feedback from staff, students in the community. We didn't want the full school committee to have to consider. Each feedback, like each instance of feedback. So it was a way to sort of filter some of that.
Okay. I mean, I'd be in favor if you just take that same sentence and maybe just copy paste it into the other one, just to.
I was thinking the other one, we could add.
Our policies, suggestions for policy development, maybe change revision to development, since that's what the specific.
You can say like, policy development will. I was actually thinking in that other policy, the, in that first sentence, where it's like. The, like, after the second word, doing like comma, like initiating with the policy subcommittee, comma.
Yeah, perfect. I will take, whatever, that sounds great, if that's what you're able to incorporate in that some way, I think that would be very helpful. Beth, anything? No, Mary, anything else?
Nope, all good.
All right, Hillary, anything else for you? No?
No.
All right, moving on, BGD, school committee review of procedures.
This is basically straight from mask. We didn't have any changes.
I don't, I don't have anything to add, I think it's pretty. Speaks for itself. Mary, anything?
Nope, all good.
Elizabeth? No, Hillary?
No.
All right, so then this one, it sounds like what we're saying is that one would be fine to adopt at some point as is, we're not gonna have. Any suggestions for that one. Um, the, these are the handbooks, that's the one that we were talking about, the seniors, right, the, I mean, the high school. Last sentence, the handbooks, it says handbooks will be reviewed, approved annually by the school committee. Can I get clarification, is it a high school handbook, or is it all the handbooks?
Don't we approve all the handbooks?
I would say that we haven't been consistent in that practice, but I just wanna make sure the policy reflects what we're actually gonna be doing. So I think we did the high school one last year, or this year. But I don't know, Brian, I'll look to you, is the intent that the school committee would be approving all of the handbooks? Or just the high school?
I think it's just the high school, not that we don't share all of them with you, but I think the high school is the one that you have to approve.
Where does the have to come from?
I think there's an MGL, I thought I read it somewhere.
So maybe it's just a reference from on here, cause my only worry is if we think that the high school is all we have to do, but actually. That's not true, like, because masks said handbooks, like, I wanna make sure that we're not.
That's why I wanna, yeah, get clarification, I don't, if, if it's, if we're doing handbooks, and that means we're doing more than what is, you know. What we had before, which is fine, but then I wanna make sure, like, next year, if, if we're only gonna get the high school one, that we're revisiting. The expectation or requirement. So, maybe that could be a takeaway to look at. And if there's any revision, I would be in favor, I don't know. Does everyone wanna approve all of them, or maybe we just state, approve the high school, review others, or something to that effect? Maybe that could be what the policies of committee proposes, based on whatever MGL requires.
Well, we can look into it.
Yeah.
All right, Hillary, any other question?
I would be more inclined to go with what the law says and what mask says than what we've historically done.
No, absolutely following the law, I just don't know if, if Brian was anticipating, I just wanna make sure that. We're all aligned on expectations, so. But that sounds like it can get worked out in the subcommittee, okay. Anything else, Beth, anything for you on that?
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the law to see if there's anything about the handbooks now.
Okay. Um, moving on, BGE, policy dissemination?
So the only change on this was the, the sentence in blue.
And that came from our prior policy, so that was something that was in a previous policy that would no longer be in the new mask ones. And so we felt like it was important to have. That's what people were aware of it, and so that we make sure and do it, since that's what we've been doing all along, and it's a good thing to have.
I have a question about the third paragraph.
Hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, um, I said, I was gonna ask, is it the school's website, you mean?
I think it's on the school committee page of the school's website.
Right.
School's website, not the school committee's website?
Well, the school committee's.
Page.
Yeah. Page on the.
It's available on the Maynard Public School website, under the school committee section.
Something like that.
Oh, so change the wording for that.
Should move committees, I guess.
Yeah, you don't even need to have committee, just with the Maynard Public School website. I had a question about the third paragraph. All policy manuals distributed will be, remain, what's that about? Like, how does that in practice, what does that look like? Is there, we actually?
I think it's like a legal disclaimer that's just supposed to.
I don't see anything legally cited, so that's why I'm curious.
I don't think it's like citing a law, I think it's more, cause at my work, we have similar things to just. Help clarify, like, if people take policies on their own. And do that, like, to help, like. Maintain the. I can't think of the word, but like, that the policies held by the school are the actual, like, real ones. And.
Yeah, but once they're distributed, though, they're out of our possession, so anyone.
And I think it's saying, though, that like, you know, if, so say we distribute one, like, say we send out this BGE to somebody. And they have it at home, and we update it two months later, the one we have is the valid one. Their old one is out of date, is no longer valid.
We're not gonna recall, that's, that's what, that's what the paragraph says, they are subject to.
No, I know, I think it's just the legal way of saying that, basically.
Yeah, I just wonder if we, if there's a way, I don't know, that just seemed a little weird when I was reading it, because it, it's reflective more of paper. And I can't imagine any effort that we're recalling paper books, like, if someone goes on the website. We're talking about posting them on the website.
I don't think it means recalling the physical pieces of paper, I think it has to do with, basically meaning, I think it's like a legal thing that mask has in there. For legal reasons to help ensure that. The, the versions held by the school are the official versions, and so if someone has an old printed copy.
Well, maybe we can word it a little bit more reader-friendly than.
Or, or the fact, yeah. The fact that we, that we put when it was updated on the bottom, doesn't that cover us? Like, if they had an old copy, we're gonna have.
I had both those thoughts, but then we decided that mask, with their legal team. Hadn't, you know, flushed this out and had it intentionally, and so didn't wanna change it. Because we figure, like, it isn't user, it isn't reader-friendly, so there must be reasons behind this specific, like, phrasing. Um, cause it's not like someone would come up with that phrasing on their own.
I mean, I would hope not, but I just, it just wanna be able to explain it to someone, since it is our policy of what, like, I'd like to understand what that means. And so I think what, either we can maybe add a clarifying sentence, possibly, that, meaning that, maybe we could just be like, just even, like. All updated policies, or something that just says updated policies, or, or will be always reflected on the website, or something to that effect, so that. If there's a question, I know a lot of, in legalese, it's, you know, there's a question, you, you, like, there's a place where you have the. The owner will be, how is at the, the school?
Yeah, I guess, I wouldn't wanna make up my own way, if like, the lawyers made up this way.
Right.
But.
This is exactly the way that Hudson had it too, just in case, you know, just for reference. The only thing that they, the thing that you added at the end is the only piece that they don't have, so.
Okay. I, and I, I'll, I'll, I didn't, I wasn't sure, I just read it and it was really off, so I didn't look, did a comparison anywhere. I'll just see in the next, you know, couple of days, if I see anything that maybe. Elsewhere that, that's been embedded.
Modify that last sentence, to say something like effective policies. Or like, in some way reflect that not only are policies gonna be available on the website, but like, the policy, like, the actual effective policies.
Yeah, I could think of some.
At the particular time.
Just the, the thing about recalling, just kinda threw me off, like, it's almost like you're emailing everyone, says, you know, send me back your.
We actually don't have it in printed form anyway, so.
So then maybe we should take that part, like, this is all policy manuals will be distributed.
I think we're, we're supposed to have a printed manual, but we don't, we've never had one where they can take it and go away with it.
So can we?
One of the policies literally refers to a binder.
So can we confirm what we're supposed to have, maybe, and, and then that would be helpful. We're supposed to have a manual, then that's bigger undertaking.
I read somewhere that there's a binder with the policy, and then behind each policy is the corresponding protocol. Cause when I read that, I had asked Brian if I could see the binder. And then. I don't remember if that was in our own policy, or one of the mask policies, but somewhere it says, there's a binder with. Each policies followed by its protocol.
Everything school committee related must be on paper unless it's, we have very specific computer. Storage, minutes, everything, agendas, everything has to be kept on paper.
Okay. All right.
So which means that we're supposed to have that, but we don't right now? I'd have to go digging through the pile of archives, I have never seen one, that doesn't mean there is, doesn't one exist, and if it does, it's outdated.
Okay. All right, so, follow up on that, I guess, it's more of a discussion piece, and I'll, on my, for my part, I'll, I'll look to see if there's any other language that I would maybe think about. For elsewhere that's, but. And then we can talk about that the next reading, so, Mauro, is that good notes for you to?
Yeah.
Bring back, okay. All right, any other questions on this particular policy? Nope, alrighty, then, moving on, what is the next one? Geez, agenda just closed. All right, I'm just gonna, Colleen, where are we going? Where's the next one?
Uh, BGF.
There we go. This was one that was Matt, that we had already. Adopted, and we're just looking to amend, is that what I'm seeing in the citation?
Right, yes.
All right, so this is basically something that we can just suspend. With a vote, the school committee, which I think is already understood.
Yep.
What part is being amended from the, what was adopted, or is this?
Um, I think it's the, hold on, I'm looking at my old one. Honestly, I'm not really, I think it was just, it looks like it was just reviewed, this looks exactly. I think it looks.
Do we, do we not have to do any type of, and it's already adopted, then, we may not need to?
Yeah, I might have to go back.
Okay.
The one that I have printed looks exactly like this, so.
So, Colleen, is that, maybe we wouldn't have to adopt this, since we've already adopted it and there's no amending?
I agree with Mauro, it is verbatim to what I currently have, so it probably just means they reviewed it, it was reviewed.
Okay, so there's no action on this one then, huh?
Right, we adopted it back in January of twenty twenty.
Okay, so now we reviewed it. That works out great. Is there anyone have any questions on it, or are we good with what we've already adopted? Alrighty, perfect.
All right.
Oh, let's see, implementation. Some of these are just so redundant, when I think about just the. Policy development, policy, you know. Almost like that it's only one, but I guess there are different actions, they just break it out so much.
I got a question for Brian. Logistically, how do you make sure that everybody knows the policies that they're supposed to? Affect?
Like, like staff members?
Yeah, it's just, it's quite an undertaking, because there are so many flippin' policies.
Right, we share the ones that sort of come to the top. So like, social media policy that we've talked a lot about, that we share that directly with them, and at the beginning of the year, or if different times of things come up, we share policies. And they know they have access to it via the website.
Okay, yeah, so just make them aware of, of the policies, and like you say, the ones that are right in you, that really we need to. Put in their face, then we make sure that they do, and I know there's certain ones that, that you do talk about every year, and how about with new teachers?
Yeah, some of them are part of, so for some of them, they're part of the orientation at the beginning of the school year. For ongoing training, like, there's conflict of interest and things like that, and then other ones that are part of the mentor training for brand new teachers, in addition.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Send out a mass email when policies are updated, to say that it's been updated, so people know they've changed from when they read them in the past?
And we send those out as well, like, last year, as we were updating policies regarding masks or, or whatnot, we sent emails about that specifically. Yep.
But not for like, like, not for policies that you don't think they care about?
Well, actually, once we're done, and going through, you know, we hit sort of a point at, in this process. We'll send a, you know, notification of what policies that got updated, and a, and a link to where they're being stored. You know, electronically, so people can find them.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I think it is saying, though, that a procedure needs to be developed to just, like, about distributing them to all of the affected. Groups prior to the implementation. Um, groups prior to the implementation.
So is that part of the policy development or? I can't recall that was, was that, was that referenced at all?
That's like the CHA and CHC.
Right, the admin, the administrative ones that we have.
Um, well, not so much that, it's in the development and dissemination of procedures, saying that a procedure needs to be made. Showing how, um. The policies will be distributed, um. To the applicable groups.
So you're suggesting edits here or?
No, I'm just saying, like, I think that, um, my, so it came back a month ago when we were like going through these policies in depth. Um, like in a few places, it talks about implementation date so that, um. Like when we vote on a policy, it can't go into effect that night. We have to set an implementation date in the future. So that, um, like Colleen wouldn't have time to upload it to the website, Brian wouldn't have time to disseminate to the applicable parties. Like, um, throughout the policies, there was things about making sure that, you know. Um, like we can't have a policy in effect on a Thursday night that's applicable on Friday that nobody knows about on Friday.
I mean, we did that for masks, so I'm, I would argue that that.
Just because we did it, doesn't mean it's supposed to happen.
We weren't, we weren't alone, like, like every district did similar policy, you know, so I'm just curious, how do we, how do we? What would that process look like in the future?
Have a discussion when we vote on them. And so we would say, you know, when we're about to vote on it, like. What effective date do we want for this policy? And the effective dates will go on the bottom of the policy. And so for something like these policies that really only impact the school committee. You know, if Colleen needs a month to make it effective to get it on the website and everything. We could be okay with that. Where something like the mask that we're voting on a Thursday and is going into effect on Monday. We would just have to make sure someone at the school can upload it and disseminate it quickly. Um. But that's kind of the case regardless, like we, if, like with the mask policy, we need to make sure people, like Brian obviously sent it out right away. Like, we didn't change the mask policy and not tell anyone.
Right, but with, at least when we did the mask policy last February. Or into March, we did do a, you know, a specific date of the Monday. From when we, um, you know, so it was, it was. Um, it was quick. It wasn't like it was going in the next day.
Yeah, right. It wasn't like posted on the web. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm sure there was a lot of work and it was, I think it was emailed around, but. My, my question, I guess, getting back to like our regular process. Um, we don't talk about effective dates in our normal deliberation. We just have adopted dates, which is the day we adopted. So I'm just thinking about the ones. That, right, but the ones we've already adopted have no reflection of an effective date.
So those ones went, became effective the date they were adopted, but this is, these policies are basically saying that that's not a good idea because. You need to make sure everybody knows about them ahead of time.
So if we go back to BGB, the last paragraph says adopted policies are qualified, dated. And filed in school committee policy manual, the effective date will ensure that affected persons have an opportunity to become familiar, blah, blah, blah. So do we put up like, you know, within a month or is that someplace that we define what that means?
So I think that we talked about defining it, but I think there's a really big difference in different types of things. So like with the mask policy, we wanted it effective. That coming Monday, so that Brian had that one day. To disseminate things really quickly, deal with reasonable accommodations. But, but for things like these school committee policies, I don't know that we.
Hello? Can I, Hillary, I think we lost, did we lose her?
I think so.
So I just was wondering along that same line, would it be appropriate in this? To add a general sentence that might state, um. All policies will be in effect no later than thirty days from when they are adopted. So that gives. That window or whatever, two weeks or whatever we want to say, but at least we won't have to go back to. You know, we're adding that date. So if it's ever missed on a place, it's assumed that everyone has an adopted date. But, um, we can say that they were in effect no later than the thirty days or whatever. From when it was adopted.
Thirty days unless otherwise, um.
Yeah, otherwise it revisited or amended, you know, or whatever. Would that be helpful, do you think, Hillary? And we can add that in here. And then that.
But if people wanted, I'm okay with it.
So what's easy to remember for Colleen?
You might also want to take it, look at the next policy, CH dash CH. Because it coordinates with us.
What do you, what do you think about, okay, let's, should we jump into that one and then we can, that one's development and dissemination, right? The CH. A CHC?
Right.
Alright, so my, my suggestion would be for both of these, that's feedback, maybe to see how we can set some general. Like a sentence in one or two places that is, talks about implementation, more of a. Would that be something that the policies subcommittee can do in? You know, whether it's here or in the other one, the best place to maybe say that they will be implemented and, you know, pick a date that might work best with. Colleen and, um, like reasonable to get all of those.
But like one set date for all policies regardless of how urgent they are. So like. If Colleen needs thirty days, in some cases, things like the mask would have a thirty day implementation.
Like we said, we just have like a standard.
Like no later than thirty days or like they were automatically.
Important, we just say that this would be effective on Monday.
I think I like the no later than, we can definitely talk about it in subcommittee.
Yeah, and whether it's two weeks or whatever that, that timeframe is, I think just. Um, it, it, and we can state otherwise if there's a particular policy that we're, we'll just have to be more mindful of that. I think as we're moving forward, right?
I think it also kind of protects us in, or, you know, so that somebody can't just say sixty months later, oh, well, I didn't know that that policy, you know.
Right, there is no, there is no one that wasn't ineffective and have a date on it and we can say that, well.
Yeah.
And Colleen, that is okay, thirty days is okay.
No, I think the language no later than, that way if it's more urgent.
Thirty days is a reasonable deadline, it's not too soon.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll talk about it in subcommittee.
Perfect.
Anything else on, um, since we're on this one, um, CHA, CHC? Um, Mary, you put, can we have an example?
And Hillary, Hillary cited it, which, yeah, I was just trying to understand what we were trying to get at there, so.
Okay, and should, um, should the cross-reference on this one also be like, because all these are touched a little bit. I don't see the cross-referencing of the different policies cited. Should we cite? Um, the implementation or. Policy as well, I'm just.
To add, like on this one, to add the CH?
Yeah, I'm wondering if that might be helpful because they kind of have overlap a little bit and. If we're adding, I don't know which one is going to be decided where we're going to say no later than, like if that's the implementation or if that's. Want to put it in here, whatever that is, but it just is a cross-reference. So if we put it on the other one, this one can, you know, reference the other one and. As far as it comes to dissemination and effective data, it'll be at least, they can be linked.
Right, okay.
So I have, Elizabeth, anything for you?
Yeah, my one question is, we're in the bottom, it says, uh, cross-reference school attorney. Does it need to be more specific than that?
Uh, no.
Policy.
The name, so I think that the way that this is written is confusing because I asked the same thing. Um, it's BDG school attorney. Like the BDG is the school attorney one. But, so I think maybe there needs to be like a dash or something. Like it's BDG and. School attorney.
Right.
So I, I'm not sure, maybe we just take off the school attorney. Maybe we don't even need that.
That works.
Well, I know, I like that it's reference. I think that's what we, we have that in other policies. Maybe the dash might be helpful, just so it doesn't call out, like it's a different.
I think I'd like to go back through and see like how other ones are, um. Are referenced because that one also, you know, this one, like I was like, I don't understand why does it say school attorney?
That link, that link is not really doing anything. The, the BDG link.
These are like word documents in our folder, they're not like the final ones, I think.
It is, it is, it is a hyperlink, but it doesn't go anywhere.
I know, but the other links and that are in, the other things that are currently in our folder aren't going to any of the links either. Like they're not working, like the one.
We should just get rid of them.
Well, no, because we want them when they're on the website.
So in the final version, I think is what we're saying is we want to make sure that they're either working, right? And then, um.
Then what will that hyperlink go to?
This is not the final, final working copy. This is, well, this is the working copy. It's not the final copy. And I just want to note time, we're ten minutes over and I know Brian has a hard stop at seven and I'm a hard stop at seven fifteen.
Yeah, good. Um, I'm just wondering, so the school, when you're saying school attorney is not, what do you mean? The B, BDG is a.
It's the name of the policy, yeah.
Okay, so then the school attorney, what, what, I thought you said that was the name of the attorney's office.
That's not, it's not the name. It's, that's why she was saying instead of, it looks like it's a BGG, a school attorney, so it's just the. Name of the policy that references school attorney.
Oh, I see what you mean now. Okay, alright, got it.
Alright, um.
Maybe adding the word policy, school attorney policy.
Good idea. Oh wow, I, I'm gonna look into how we normally do it on other policies. I'm gonna check the formatting because, um.
Yeah, we don't normally put the title of the policy.
Okay, we should just take it rid of it.
Alright, so next conversation, we'll do that, you guys brainstorm and. I think we, we looked at C, C, CHA, CH, right, we did all those. So I think, is it BGF suspended? No, we did that, we did all the. The first reads, right? So now we're on. Okay, so annual budget, um, DB. Alright, and then this is the, these are the, this is the batch that we have to rescind three oh one. In that same motion that we're going to be adopting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there was no other final changes on DB, correct?
No.
Alright, the other one for the, um. D, C, B, no, DBC. Yeah, and that is the one that has the, the template, we were gonna have the appendix. Right, so are we gonna do the DBC dash E and that's gonna be the, um.
Gonna be the calendar?
The calendar.
Yeah, that template.
Right.
Okay.
Does that sound, um.
Yep, I had put that actually as a note, should we add it? So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a, yeah, I had put a general template, I had put in the folder for, um.
Great, excellent.
That I had, I started doing, I don't think I circulated it, but I, after our last meeting, I, I went in and put like X's, so we could just take that template and just copy it every year and plug in the.
Yep, that's really helpful, especially for new people.
Okay, and. The only thing is I did have, um, feedback on this particular one when I was reading over it and I think. Um, just in line with what our charter mandates, um, I had some additional suggestions on this. We, we don't, we do have to submit the budget to the select board and the town administrator. As a school committee, and I think it's informed by the budget subcommittee, but we do not do it cooperatively with. The Fin, the Fincom. So I wanted to.
But I think that's DBC. We're currently on DB.
Oh, well, yeah, I was, I'm sorry. I was looking at the one with the, the calendar, the, with the DBC, with the template. Is, so is DB, everyone okay with DB, right? Beth, anything? Alright, Hillary, good. Alright, so DBC?
Do we want to vote on this?
Oh, I was gonna do one, because I think we have to do them all.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to vote on each individual and then at the end we send.
Okay, I could do that, if that works, um. So now that we're talking about effective date, um, do I need a, should I say that here or do I just stick with our regular process?
I just stick with the regular for now.
Okay, alright, so I will, um, make a motion that we. Adopt policy DB annual budget, which will replace three zero one.
I can second.
Any further, uh, discussion? Okay, roll call. Elizabeth Albuda?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths? Oh, did we lose Hillary?
No.
Yes.
Oh, okay, um, sorry, and Natasha Rivera, yes, okay, motion carries. Alright, DBC. And I see that we did the, yep, they have the attachment, so that could be DBC dash E, correct? Um, Colleen, is that what we would do with the template? Okay.
Yeah.
And then my suggestion was just towards the end. Just because we don't. The submission isn't in cooperation with Fincom. For our budget. We do that in December and it goes to the select board and the town administrator by December. Team, so. Unless our char, our charter changes.
You're talking about our budget subcommittee, right? The school budget subcommittee, not tri board, okay.
Right, right, like we, our school, like we come, like we have the calendar, we, you know, we, we go put through like that template, right? And we say this is what our meetings will be, this is blah, blah, and, and then that is what informs, like when it's, you know, being submitted. Like we schedule the meeting, the public, you know, the December meeting, um, does that sound right to you, Mary?
Yep, that sounds fine, yeah.
Mauro, any thoughts? Are we, are we okay with those particular changes?
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. If that's the way that we normally do it, then that's how it should be reflected.
Elizabeth, anything from you? Um, Hillary?
Well, that works.
Okay, so I will go ahead and make a motion that we. Accept the policy DBC budget deadlines and schedules with suggested edits. And we include the appendix DBC dash E for the template of the annual budget calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Alright, we'll call vote. Mara, Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albada?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. Alright, motion carries. Great. Thank you, and then. Where are. Budget planning DBD?
This is just straight from, um.
Yeah, that's just. Pretty basic.
Yeah.
Um. Any, any questions on this? I think it's just pretty standard. Alright, so then I will entertain, well, I will make a motion that we adopt DBD budget planning as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call. Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albada?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Oh, yes.
I think she said yes for you. All right, Mara, Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. All right, motion carries. And then I think I mentioned it in an earlier motion, but um, I'll just make another one. I'll make a motion that we rescind policy three oh one.
Uh, we also need to do DBG.
Oh, whoops.
That's not on there, never mind. We had. All right, no, that's, it's just in my folder, forget it.
Okay, okay.
So we're not gonna do DJ and DJA and DJE tonight? No, those weren't, those weren't um those were not on the agenda. I had lots of policy numbers in my head. Oh, no worries. That's okay, problem at all.
Yeah, that's okay. So we can, we are rescinding policy three oh one.
Yeah.
And um, and that's it for tonight then, right? Because the other ones are first reads, and we'll we'll rescind the rest of them when we do our second reads and adopt the C H, right, C H A and.
Right.
Okay, all right, so I am, I make a motion that we rescind policy three oh one.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call, Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. All right. Don't pause.
Before we move on to the um protocols, just a quick uh, ask, um, when mask updates their policies, how, how do we want to um handle that? Going forward, because they have, I, I don't, I'm assuming that the majority of you got the mask um letter that had the huge list of everything that they reviewed and changed and all that. How, how do you want to deal with these? Um, because I mean, that could take up a whole year of our time each year.
Right, I would say that maybe look to see if there's anything like super urgent, like there's, you know, critical, like they had the mask stuff that came out, you know, that's and that one might want to be discussed in a future policy subcommittee meeting. Um, but pending that, maybe just provide, you know, keep them together and look towards creating a recommendation for the, every, like the next year, because that's part of what um, the beginning of the year you're doing, right? You have a list of policies that you've already prioritized, unless there are other critical ones that might come up, so I don't know.
So sometimes they have really like small changes, but they're, I mean, they're worth it. Like, if masks felt like they were worth making the change. Um, and so, like, do we, would we want to say, if it's like a grammatical change, would we want to say we just want to implement them? Or would we want to handle them like a consent agenda, where we would like send out things that don't have significant changes? And then, like, at a future meeting, basically, like, treat them sort of like minutes where, you know, if there's twenty policies that have had such minor changes, I can't imagine anyone would have an issue with them. We could say, you know, without further objection, we move to update these twenty policies to the mask um, with mask updated versions with these small um changes.
I think we would need to put language like that into the implementation or the adoption or the review policies that we're talking about that just allows for that process, because right now it doesn't lend for that, but maybe that's a, it's a good thought, like, you know, do we want to if there's like grammatical or label changes that they're not substantive, you know? I would want to hear what the policy.
Like references thing, it's like the mask general law changes, so, you know, the policy doesn't change, but the reference changes, or
Right.
Something like that, that, like, of course we would update to be accurate, to go to the right, you know?
So I didn't get this, I didn't get this update. Do they say, do they give you some kind of highlighted version that tells you exactly what they changed in some very readable, scannable way?
Yeah, they give her a red line.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they have, they usually have a red line file, so we can. Yeah.
And I think it has a summary where it says like the policy name, and then just says like grammatical changes or wording, rewording, or.
I just want to be cognizant of time, just real quick, I know we have four minutes.
So I just.
And I want to make sure that we have time to go over, because I know we have a hard stop at seven for Brian's.
It's weirdly every time I try to say something, someone reminds us of time, and I.
Sorry.
They must have been hurt, I haven't been hurt at all, but anyway. Um, yeah, I was, what I was gonna say is I think that this policy subcommittee can figure out, like, some way to deal with the different, different levels, and then just get back to us.
Great, thank you for restating. All right, I think we can go ahead and go on to the protocols and the um operating principles and protocols. Um, I know everyone's kind of looked at it a little bit, and I put some comments in just to kind of clean it up, but I think our last conversation was recognizing that we couldn't do we everywhere, because it was a joint superintendent and school committee in in many places, and some places it wasn't. So it um went back to kind of expanding that a little bit. Um, I'll go around just.
Because can it say we, meaning school committee and superintendent, because we all sign the bottom?
No, because some of the things are particular to member relationships.
Uh huh.
Um, that's what we realized at our last meeting, we talked about it, like when we said we, you know, it was like talking about like interpersonal member relationships and not necessarily the superintendent, and so it kind of got and a little bit confusing when you, depending on which section. Most of them were school committee stuff, not all of them were superintendent, but um. So I think that going through what's in here right now, um I had put a comment under the committee, or Mary, actually, you have this comment under committee business. Um, number two, we acknowledge the importance of subcommittees, and the superintendent agrees to focus them on, I I know we talked about this in our meeting before, and I didn't see it added, so I think that would be helpful to codify in there. Is everyone, everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Hillary?
Yeah.
Yep.
And it actually came out of the sample too, so it's something that, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it. I remember we we did. Um, okay, so then.
But do you want it number two or number three? Or is it replacing two?
No, I don't think it's replacing two. It's a separate um effort, but I would say maybe a three.
Yep, it says number three. Mary put it in as number three.
Yep, yep. Okay.
I know, baby.
Brian, take off if you have to.
Brian, is there anything? I know that you, I just want to get your feedback real quick before you sign off. Is there any, any thoughts? Are we on anything that's looking off kilter for you, or that you wanted to add, or are we okay? Are you trusting us with this document so far?
No, I read it.
Okay.
There were parts that felt a little repetitive, but then a slow read, and they're very specific. They're similar, but different.
Okay, and we could, you know, again, this is for sure, if we need to amend it, you know, after, but I think it'll be a good document to start off with. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Agreed.
I know the last couple of times we talked about it, you haven't either been there, or, so I just want to make sure you had an opportunity to speak directly to it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Brian.
Good night. Wayne, you don't have to, Wayne doesn't have to.
Yeah, Wayne, you can sign off too, Wayne. Brian, I do need to connect with you and Colleen, or maybe.
Wayne, you need to add, you need to gain some weight, Wayne. You're, you're looking too thin these days.
All right.
About you, they eat that hog and dogs.
Okay, and then um on that, for we, should we um preface it, like, the first one, the school committee and superintendent acknowledge instead of importance, and the superintendent agrees, so we just kind of call out? I don't know. Okay, and then going on to committee and member communication. This one seems like a contradicting, contradiction. Hillary, did you, can you speak to that a little bit more? What were your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, when I read it, I sort of read the first um sentence as, you know, we're not gonna answer questions and concerns, we're gonna refer people to the superintendent. And then the second sentence I read as, the superintendent will give the school committee the information they need to respond themselves. Um, and so it sort of seemed like the first one was saying, we're not gonna respond, we're gonna have Brian respond, and the second part is saying, Brian's gonna give us the information so we can respond. Um, so those sort of seem like contradictions. Um. I don't know that we want, like, you know, all or nothing, either which way, but um, when I read that, I was like, wait a minute, what?
Um, Mary, do you have any thoughts, or Beth, any, anything?
Um, I think maybe it's, if we clarify that we're gonna take the important questions and concerns that we receive from members of the community that have to do with the logistics.
Operations.
Of the school, the operation of the school, then I think it makes sense.
So should we clarify, do you think that first sentence, this is refer important questions, concerns regarding personnel and operations, that, would that be helpful, do you think?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's great.
And then what we want to say for the second sentence, to respond to other community concerns? Instead of to an issue?
Um, do we want to put that as a separate bullet, maybe, since it's kind of a separate issue, like one's personnel and stuff, and then one of them is? I don't know. Superintendent will investigate and provide all S C members with information needed to respond. Um, maybe, maybe it could be like for non-personnel, or like, just like, kind of like continuing on for all other matters, for all other matters.
Is that trying to say for all other matters, or is that trying to say if someone comes to us with a personnel issue, and we refer them to Brian, Brian will investigate and let us know how he handled it, so we know it was handled?
That's the way I read it.
Say, okay.
I read it that way first, but now I see the other way too.
Well, sorry, I can't hear you, Elizabeth.
I said, I read it that way first, but now I'm reading it the other way.
Okay.
So in that case, then, should we have a separate bullet, since it's, we mean it to be different?
Yeah, I think it should, maybe it's, maybe that's the problem, is that we're kind of, they are different, right? We don't, we don't want him to tell us about personnel, you know, matters. Um, but maybe it's for non maybe the superintendent will, will provide the school committee members with information needed to respond with non-personnel.
I would wonder if you should be more general and not say investigate and provide, provide, because that sort of makes it sound like investigating, like particular things that need investigation. Maybe it should be more general and suggest the superintendent will keep the school committee members informed um, of going like, you know, informed so that they can respond to community concerns as they arise.
The only thing is, I think this was, because it was tied originally, it was because, like, if we get a feedback from a public that's not one of those other areas, we wouldn't want to respond our own, right? So it might be that we would respond, not Brian, per se. So I think it's kind of linked, but if we're, that's why I didn't know if it would be helpful to say, um I don't know, we could, I'm fine with whatever. I think it's, we can get the tent if we need to.
I feel like what it says investigate is sort of referring to something, investigate something, like something already came up, and now he's gonna investigate and let us know.
There might be, like, we get feedback, you know, from something, and that, you know, like, this didn't happen, right? And then we, we forward it to Brian.
Not, I think, I'm, I'm more talking about like the grammar, where, because we're not saying.
The word investigate?
Well, and because it's, because the sentence is starting out with, he'll investigate, I feel like it means it's, he'll investigate the situation that was already mentioned above. Versus like, you know, if, like, if the community brings up concerns that are not personnel operations related, the school, the superintendent will investigate, like, I just think, like, I'm more just saying.
What do you suggest for the wording then?
I'm not sure. It depends what the, the goal was of the sentence.
It, it, can we just take it out? Is it, does it need to be there at all?
No, I think it does, because it's at, the intent was to request, make sure we get information shared with us.
Well, I think, yeah, so maybe it just needs a total overhaul. I don't, yeah. All right, so let's just not hear that say that he'll keep us informed. I don't know that this sentence is doing something, something else is not. I'm just gonna put a flag in this, let's move on and we'll come back.
Yeah, I agree.
Elizabeth, I can't really hear what you're saying. Can you tell me, maybe tell me later what you were trying to say there, because I think it's important, I'd like to know.
I, I'm just saying, I think, I'm not sure that this covers something that nothing else is covering. Number one, and number two, I think we should move on and come back to it.
Okay.
Okay, um, number three on that. Are we fine with the edits? Committee members will channel requests for information, reports and data through the superintendent and the
Yep.
committee chair, rather than directly to staff. All right, I think we can accept all those um edits. Before the committee and superintendent recognize, we're fine with that, nobody, um. Oh, this is when I had a question um on this one, number five. Um, is this, I feel like this is out of place. I think it's actually stated in number two, or up, the up other section above, by number two, um, under the business community, um, school committee business, where it talks about, once we take action, the school members will support the official position of the school committee. That's stated similarly under, I think it's number two. I wonder if we could either combine? Or, um, because I do feel like this is not really a communication.
Yeah, I agree.
Piece?
Yeah, I think we combined, just that one sentence about that, we're gonna work towards the greatest benefit of all students is missing from the other one.
Right.
There, so I think we can.
Yeah. Okay, great. So you're gonna, you're gonna, awesome, thank you, Beth. Okay, and then and then you're putting that up. All right, that solves that one. And then we can get rid of number five altogether then, right?
Yep. I'm just about to fix the other one.
All right, and then while she's typing that, um, improvement? Committee improvement.
Yeah, that's where I just added, because it was on the sample, and I thought it was worth it. Um, where did I go here? Do you do, school committee members and the superintendent recognize the importance of professional growth and development to that end, and then we will provide continuing education. So it was adding that.
Under, under number one.
So it's adding. Yeah, it was in the sample, and I thought it was really well written.
No, I like that. Now, you have that in the comment right there, so that's me.
Yep.
All right, um number number two. We agree to participate in formal training and organize, I think organized by the superintendent, and I don't think the chairs, and we, I don't know. I can't imagine that there would be any formal training that the
But and then, yeah, and then I added and conducted um by organizations such as mask and mass, you know, additionally, because we do count on them.
Right, right.
Not in lieu of, but those are also resources, if people thought that was worth it.
So, yeah, so maybe um it would be, we the committee agrees to participate in formal training, um rec, maybe we put recommended by the superintendent and the chairperson?
Um, or, or maybe recommended by superintendent, comma, school committee, chairperson, comma.
Mask.
And conducted by, yeah, and mask or M A S S.
Okay, yeah, because sometimes, I mean, if it's like going to, there's a financial cost to it, we obviously want to have a conversation, maybe it's just like one or two people go or something. Beth, you have that one?
Um, do you want me to do, sure, I can do that. I'm sure, I was, I like how Mary worded it. I think that's, I like that beginning. Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it works for me. The only thing, yeah, just the recommended instead of required. Instead of organized, but recommended.
Right, um, yeah, we agree to participate in formal training, uh, recommended by the superintendent, comma, the school committee chairperson, um.
I just lost.
And mask.
It's under.
Number two.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and, or, you know. And, and are, you know, and conducted by organizations such as mask and masks.
We, we, so okay, start again. So we agree to participate in formal training organized by, recommended by by superintendent. Superintendent.
Committee chair.
This is the chair. And or mask. Right?
Yep, and mask maybe, M A S S.
Oh, okay, sure.
Mask and mask, yeah. Yeah, perfect.
Okay. On the opening for that, can we, we put the committee?
The opening to number two?
Instead of, yeah, instead of, yeah, instead of we, I think we have many.
Is Brian committing to this too? He goes to mask trains with us and mask.
But he's, this is about what's being recommended by. He's recommending stuff to us. So I guess maybe that's the.
Because we're to the school committee and you might recommend something to.
Right, so. Are we saying that we would recommend something to Brian? Because when we say we, it's about participating in.
I mean, we have.
Right, I just wasn't thinking about it through that, through that context. That's what I was. I think it was intended to be a school committee, but I'm fine with however we want to. As long as it's consistent. All right.
We actually are doing, so we might as well just leave it we, you know?
Okay, all, number five, we commit to setting genuine goals with the intent of continuously improving our service to the schools.
I like that.
So do we want to getting, setting goals? Like committee goals, district goals, because this is again superintendent as well, setting, do we want to?
We are, I mean, all of it. Right?
All the goals, right?
All the goals, all of them. You can do this if you want.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, like, are we like in, you know? Yeah, smart goals. Yeah, you want to put smart, I like that. Let's go.
Smarty.
Smarty goals.
Okay, all right, lovely. Power. I don't, I don't have anything. Separate on this. Anybody else? Just some grammatical stuff. Um, number, I think just the we in front of three, I think three kind of gets at that one about personnel. You see personnel complaints and concerns will be directed to the superintendent. That, that's probably where that's some of that redundancy. Do we want to take it out of that, that part since we added it up higher? Because it is more of a communication.
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Hillary, what do you, is that okay with you?
I think it's actually good to have it there too, because I think that's where it gets into like, I think it's if a
Power.
Committee member were to try to use their power to impact things on the teacher.
Okay, all right. So then should we just put like, do we change the opening to the committee?
Uh, we're at seven fifteen.
Okay. Um.
Colleen, are you able to transfer your power to somebody else?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you change it over to me, Colleen?
Actually, I think I already made you co-host.
For me? Oh, okay, there we go.
I didn't know if you were sharing it. Um, so just hit stop when it's done and it'll go up the cloud.
Stop recording and it'll automatically go to do its thing and then end the meeting, right?
Correct, and I'm going to stop sharing. So if you want to share this.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen. I'll try not to break it. I'll try not to break it while you're. Five minutes that will hold off. All right, um, okay, let me share my screen.
Sorry, can we go back to school committee improvement for a second? Because I had written another note way back in, on March ninth about adding one. Which I thought was good. About our self-evaluation. Must have come from the samples again.
Which one? Where is it at?
It was, it was on the, it was right underneath Elizabeth's, we commit to setting genuine goals. It was
Another this morning?
Right, number six. I was talking about adding another one. The superintendent and school committee agree to set aside time on an annual basis for self-evaluation and to review our progress toward adhering to agreed norms and beliefs. It was in the sample again. I thought it was worth worth doing if others agree.
I like it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, now, Colleen, I'm trying to figure out now where it was.
Up, up.
It's up, okay.
There you go.
Oh.
It made its way in there. I don't know who did it.
Elizabeth made, I didn't know.
Okay, all right, great, good. I'm just going to keep scrolling down. I can't like share it up and down and type of the. Okay, um, thank you, Elizabeth.
Maybe it's down for you.
Oh geez.
Yeah, it's down, sorry.
Okay, so committee member communications, we, those are the ones that we we talked about already. All right, here we go. There we go, smarty goals, okay. The superintendent will agree to set aside time on annual basis for self-evaluation. Yes, love it. Committee's limits of power. Again, I think this is also kind of redundant because it's did we say earlier, those? Oh, you said that you wanted to keep it here, right? Okay.
So you said it about the last time it was redundant. Oh no, it was here that she said it.
It was this one, right? Yeah, okay. It was under the power. You wanted to keep it in both sections. Okay. We will follow chain of command. All right, this is where there's two. There's two, it talks about handling personnel.
Yeah.
Should we get rid of?
Yeah, I see. Number one and number three.
Yeah, and then it's also up higher when we talk about like the communication. So I, I just think that we get at some point, maybe that's the redundancy piece.
And maybe it's.
I don't.
Yeah, I think it's the personnel complaints will be directed to the superintendent. That part I think is the redundant because that was directed earlier. Here we are affirming, I think to Hillary's question earlier about power. It is responsibility of the superintendent to do the hiring, evaluation, handle of personnel issues.
Right, okay.
So does that, Hillary?
You're suggesting to take out that second sentence on number three.
I want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that. If that's satisfied, if we eliminate that, it's still captured elsewhere. We're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Is Hillary?
Yes.
I asked her not, I just want to make sure, yep.
Sorry, I'm looking at the document.
Yep, okay, and and then I think, yeah, that's fine, that, just the we will, I think it's the committee. I think we just need to say the committee. Because it's really us, not, not the superintendent. Who's using our position for personal.
Yeah, he shouldn't be either.
I guess, no, you know, it's so funny because I, when you say it like that, I'm like, I always think about it because we're like, you know, we're the conflict of interest and like, you know, that's where we are held to that in a, I guess, but I guess he's the same, yeah. Yeah. So, all right, that's fine.
So should we, so should we be changing, like this is called the, the committee's limits of power? Should we just take out the committee and say?
Limits of power, yeah. Beautiful, love it. Um, okay, handling, miss communication mishaps. Um.
I agree, I agree with Hillary. The worst part is that last sentence. I feel like I'm going to send this to the prison's office.
Yeah, I don't like it either. I was just like, I don't know what I'm going to do, like, you know, like, I don't want people to come to me, like. Yeah, so can we?
Besides my reaction to it when I read it, I was like, ugh. I also felt like that kind of is counter to the whole principle that nobody has more power than anyone else in the school committee and everything's a committee issue.
Yeah, I don't want to.
If there were an issue where someone were violating these things, it really should be handled as the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, also like, we're all adults, like, go talk to someone, you know, like, hey, you know, if you have something like, make, you know, that would be my thought, like, did you talk to them, you know? So I just don't know what, I mean, I got, I have kids already, so.
Yeah, I don't need to, yeah, we don't need a punishment.
Yeah, yeah, no timeouts. Thank you. And plus it just kind of made it so, again, it felt very punitive, you know, like. Then what? Um, okay, so aside from just that cleanup, I think we're
It's good.
We're, we're, we're like the substance, we're, we're good except for the one that maybe needs to be revisited.
Beth, can you just tell me what you want it to be about? So I just, Hillary put it in, the superintendent will keep the school committee members informed of school-related concerns. Is that all you guys want captured? In that one that we separated from number one under committee and member communications, communication. Also, do we need to make this just communication?
I like.
Yeah, I think it just, I think it just could be communication.
Yeah, so is, so what Hillary wrote there in the comment, is that all you want captured in number two? Or is there something else that everyone was thinking? Because it was an unclear sentence.
You know what? And while you're doing that, I'm just looking at the headers.
Yeah, I think we need to revisit the headers.
Yeah.
But I, I do like how Hillary worded that.
So that's all you guys needed in there, right? There's nothing else that you're, that you felt was captured there that is lost, what she wrote?
Well, I think what was not captured is that if we get something, this is where I think the part of the intent got lost. If we got something that was not related to personnel or operations, and then we wanted to get more information that Brian, like in order for us to respond, that Brian would then need to provide us that information.
So I think in some extent, we're not supposed to respond if it's a personnel or an operations issue.
No, that's what I'm saying, if it's not, it's not, like I'm saying, if it's not personnel or operation, we should be able to respond, but we might need information from Brian.
But the other thing is, so to some extent, if it is a personnel or operations issue, it's not that we don't want any information, like we can refer it to Brian, but then I think to some extent, we want to, there can be situations where we want to know from Brian that he handled it or what the status is or um, so that as part of the evaluation of Brian, you know? Um, and obviously within the limits of the school committee responsibility, but like, if there's a really big issue with personnel. Um. Like, it may be something we need to be updated about with not, not all the details and not everything behind it, but there may be some things we need to know about.
So maybe we word it in a way that says the committee, the superintendent will investigate or as recommended or whatever, or as necessary and will follow up where allowable with this, with the committee. What do you think, Hillary? Under number one?
It kind of felt like keeping it really general would cover both of those. Like, keeping it, keeping it general could cover both wanting an update as needed for personnel and operations things that we already hear about from the community, as well as keeping us updated about things, the other areas of school-related concerns. So like, we want to be updated about things like a tree falling on the roof of Green Meadow. If there is a teacher that's having a really big issue where the whole community is upset, we don't want to be totally clueless. Um, we also don't want to do one handling it, but.
How do you want to, how do you think about wording for number one and number two then? That's what I'm.
Yeah, I was sort of thinking just keeping number two general.
Just something like number two, something like, keep us informed, including follow-up steps taken.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
But I put personnel concerns, but maybe that's too gen, too.
I think that makes it too specific.
Right.
Well, follow-up steps taken, or how to address the concerns or something, just maybe not even put personnel.
Concerns, are we good with that?
Yeah, because we refer to it at the top where it says school-related concerns, so just follow up on that.
Saying including follow-up steps and leave out taken to address concerns?
Yeah.
Or just including follow-up?
I'm just going to say yes to everything right now, just so. Everything sounds great. Are we, do we feel like we could vote on this tonight? Or are we not comfortable still?
Did we just change it for Brian and therefore he should see it before we vote on it?
I mean, he said that it was nothing he was super concerned with. It was things that he's already doing anyway. I think we just clarified that we will refer the personnel, that was already stated in there, the personnel would refer to that, and that we would get follow-up, that we just broke it out to I think that's how I am reading it, but we're not adding any.
Two is the only one I'm seeing on, and then I kind of feel like voting on it without Brian is a little weird, but.
Yeah, I think, out of courtesy to him, I think we just allow him to look at it. It's taken us this long. It's, I mean, the goal was just to have it done by the end of the year.
And I mean, as it looks like, well, yeah, we'll have it, we'll have it done. It'll be just, Mary and I will be the new members. So we all have a signing, the same people.
Under, under communication, number five, Natasha, you had a, a comment.
Communication number five, what was my comment? Um.
Oh yeah, I like that.
Oh, I think that's what I.
I meant to take out, right?
Yeah, that's what you meant to take out. Because you did move it up, you did move it up higher, right?
Everything else.
Okay.
Smart doesn't have an E at the end, right?
Yeah, it's smart E. It's, what is the E now? The knee's a new one, equity.
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't know that.
Interesting that it's a, a small E instead of the, the capital E like the rest of them.
It's just like a, don't forget this is a thing you have to.
Oh, okay.
Right, like otherwise it'd be like smarte, you know, be French. All right, I don't know, I'm losing it right now at this point. I'm going to stop sharing. I think we, are we okay with, this is, we're substantive, we're good, right? Okay, so it's just a matter of sending it to Brian, like, hey, did some cleanup.
Yep.
And we'll add it to the next, Mara or Beth, one of you, do you, one of you want to go the final? Go it cleanup?
Sure.
For a, for a final version for our next. We'll put it on not our next meeting, the sixth, but the one after the twenty seventh.
Okay.
Because the next meeting is a public hearing and you won't be there anyway, Mara, so.
Right, I also won't be.
Oh, you are, you're not on the sixth either?
Yeah, that, that I have to take for a whole other reason, not for work. I can't, I can't make it.
Okay.
So next year, can we not have school committee meetings on like three of the nights? I have to be.
I know, I'm sorry.
That means I need to make sure I get there on time.
Yeah, really.
All right, well, in this, can I stop sharing? I think we are good for now, and Mary, do you have like two minutes? All right, let me turn off, oh wait, actually before I do, I'm going to make entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
So, all right. Okay, you guys not want to leave? I mean, we can stay around, everybody, I don't know. All right, Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. Dawn, yes. All right, we will, we stop recording.